Issues that again, a lot of the habitat conservation plan are things that are going to be way bigger than the county. And and that's part of what your board's letters have stated is that, you know, you can't make a decision and then say the state needs to be a partner in the solution, but no one's come up with the solution. And so just trust us that at some point, things will get bad enough that that someone will.
I don't. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't like.
That's not a good policy strategy. And so, so, so we were thinking the same thing. But we can certainly, in the next iteration, pull out economic development as one of those external factors, just period.
It comes by angst to see it listed specifically because it gives me a direction that's positive to deal with all of this.
Thank you.
So there's, there's really no decision required here for you. This is just background information. What really matters is that, that somehow you have incorporated that into your thinking when you're doing your voting. And so if you, if you look at one of these, so Commissioner Thompson, you're saying, when, when you're doing your votes up there, you're going to come at it from the perspective of, okay, what uncertainty do I have about these kinds of things, et cetera? So that's all this exercise is for. Okay, so with that, then we can move on to what we're, let's see. Jim, my.
If you aim it towards, yeah, towards the desk. Toward where, we're kind of behind you there.
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, got it.
It was the command structure.
I see. Thank you. I didn't get that instruction. Okay. All right. So here we are on the board discussion and says carryover priorities, but we're really talking about carryovers and the other stuff at the same time. So we can go through this part pretty quickly. I, I don't think I want to read all this to you. This is in your packet. So the, the main message here by showing this is that there were, there were priorities from last year, some of which were accomplished. And they're not on here, some of which were not almost accomplished. And one that got crossed out because it's going to be done in January before you even adopt this plan. And those things made it with some staff thinking up onto this set of things right here. And the, so that's part of the discussion. Are, are those, are there any carryover things that you want to hold on?
And just as a note, you'll see in the progress report that some of the items, they weren't crossed out. They're noted as will be completed by the end of this year. The reason why we didn't cross them out. So the, like the first one with the county law communications and engagement plan, that one's really specific. And so that particular plan, that information, implementation has started versus other ones like maybe childcare, where that technically has been completed, but if the board would like to continue that as a priority, but just assigning a new action. So then that's why it continues as a possible carryover option.
And so I'm going to show you the other part then, and then we're just going to open it up for discussion before we get to the voting exercise. So think of that. And by, by these with up here, this part versus carryover across the path. That's how staff put those together. And that's relatively straightforward in there. If there is no exercise of adding new ones there, because we started with last year's list and it is what it is. And now staff just decide are they done? Are they going to be done? Or would they be carried over? Everything that might be carried over is there. And then staff sometimes change the tier that went into. When you get up here, these little numbers here, they just tell you what tier it was in last year. And it's only changed if it changes. So that last year, county operations and goal design was tier one. It's still into your one, but this one equity plan for access services had a tier three last year. Staff was in the job area consideration in the tier two. So that's the information you have to work with on that.
Please don't let it survey results.
Yeah.
So can you just describe to the board, the new priorities? Those are the ones that came out of the stakeholder survey as those are potential priorities that came out of the survey. So.
That would be added.
So that's not, it could be added. So there was a survey of stakeholders and staff. So when it says.
So it's staff too.
Yes, some of the, so it went to the directors and to the stakeholders. The stakeholders were folks that are involved in our advisory boards and committees.
Okay.
And so, so the new priorities are just, those are, those are potential priorities that just came from the surveys. And your board may or may not agree with them. You may or may not prioritize them. And tell me if I'm wrong, but, but that's just what we've heard as part of our survey.
So in your packet, you have on page twenty four, I put a tab on there is the survey results. So that kind of goes into that in a little bit more detail. But in terms of like the specific points that were brought up that are reflected on here for the new priorities, that would be starting with the second attachment, which is on page forty nine. So as you're flipping through those, that first page, the whether survey respondents said that there should be additional priorities added or there, they felt that the carryover priorities that they selected would be sufficient. And then the following pages are the specific responses that are then reflected on the new priorities on there. And so Commissioner Thompson, I don't know if this is what you were referring to, but I looked and on page fifty three, your question about support tourism, that came from that third bullet point under local stakeholder feedback, referring to tourism support.
So wait, I have page, I'm looking at page fifty three of my packet.
And under the local stakeholders in that, that top bar under one, it's the third bullet point where it's fully understands.
I get, I get that, but you know, I am willing to consider tourism management. Just supporting tourism isn't what I want to see. Because it doesn't get at what, we, there was a down and here a while ago. There was a big meeting of all kinds of tourism folks and local officials before you got in. And what came out of it? The analysis was, we need to manage tourism. We need to manage its, its benefits and its costs. And so that is what I'm willing to do, but, but I don't know if everybody else agrees with that.
Can I, I just want to add, I was just at, you know, ODS HCP meeting that the social and they were talking about tourism. No matter what we do, tourists are going to come. If we don't do anything, tourists are going to come. We have the big blue ocean. The tourists are going to come. So I don't feel like we need to have a tourism priority, but I agree, we need to problem solve our, our current situation of the tourists are coming, but we, our infrastructure cannot support them coming. And so I, I feel like it's management of tourists, not, not supporting tourism in a way that alludes to the fact that we are asking for more. It, it, it's changing that thing verbiage to say, yes, we know it's coming. It's going to keep coming. It's going to keep growing no matter what we do. Positive, negative, whatever. It's, we need to figure out how to manage it. So that those who do come are in a safe and healthy place. Am I, okay. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. I mean, I think the lower county tourism council has been working on this for years.
I don't think.
And I, I don't know what.
What I would say too, what I would say too, commissioners is that the legislative priority regarding the, the form of a full TFC really plays into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, and it really is managed tourism because we need to be able to spend money to deal with, with the management side of this.
Thank you.
So, a- a- as is, has been in my experience here, I start out one step ahead of you because I have the clicker. And before we have my presentation, you're one step ahead of me. So you are, you are doing exactly what you needed to be doing when we get to the discussion. And only, and only, let me just say one thing before we get there, which is these are the carryovers. In addition, you have the new priorities. So these are the new priorities and they're at the bottom half of all those lists. And those new priorities come from primarily the survey results.
All right.
And so, and then staff's and, and then staff just kind of compiled those. So here, there, here are the steps forward. The second step I'll give you first. You're going to be surprised to learn that you're going to put docs up again. And that's your fault because you had such a good time during that last time. Didn't get our job so easy. Then we're maybe going to do it again, but you're going to put docs up. But the, the thing that we realized is, and we want you to do is to vote on both the carryovers and the new priorities at the same time. Because ultimately, you're going to need, we need, what are, yeah, what are the priorities you want to the new plan? And they come from those two sources. So before we get up to do that, before you get up to do that, it's now turned over to you for board discussion of exactly what you just did, which is, well, on the tourism thing, here's my thinking about that. And then we make a note on that and Amanda will actually go up and make, because we got three people.
What does John say?
Nodding heads here. And we have, I'll let you, I'll let you, Mr. Quiller, kind of deal with the process to bring the people in and on. But now it's up for you to discussion. We're just standing back and listening around the setup.
I, before we get started, I just have a question regarding our local stakeholders. So our local stakeholders, where did they come from?
So stakeholders, all the stuff we're just, we're just folks that are on our advisory boards and committees.
Okay, so it's the citizen advisory committees, basically.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the board. It's not, not the comprehensive plan advisory committees. It was the planning commission and then like the human services advisory committee, PSCC, those advisory committees, which are the board approved advisory committees, the ones that you appoint people to serve on. So we asked them what their priorities were. Yeah, it was on there. So it's all, all of the formal county counting committees.
I'm just curious to see if we could harvest a little further because our volunteers already have, you know, time. I was just thinking about equity. Sorry. Thank you.
Again, my question would be, how many, we talked about this, Steve, on new priorities. It says how many people identified these. But for both staff and stakeholders and county commissioners as well. But how many people total provided input on, on the staff level and the stakeholder? Is that in there?
Um, yeah. There were a total of forty four respondents. You have the commissioners, eighteen staff and twenty one local stakeholders.
Thank you.
And the, the staff that was sent to department tents. And so they worked with their team to provide that feedback.
Okay.
And then for local stakeholders too, we did reach out to some of the, the nonprofits that we contract with as well.
I was, in, in future, it would be nice with some of these comments or some of these thought processes to know how many stakeholders said a priority. Was it one that said a priority or was it ten of them that cited a priority? So does that make sense?
Yeah, each of these bullet points represents one.
One, one point of feedback.
And there were, yeah, there were a few items that had, like, had been consolidated that you can see on.
Sorry. Well, that's, that's more clarification. It's that a bullet point is one.
Mm-hmm.
One, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I was just trying to see, it was like seven people saying this or is it just one? Okay. Thank you.
I actually feel when I looked at it, it was kind of surprising that there was not more overlap. I thought there would be.
There, there was a little bit of consolidation in terms of there were a few different items that referred to community engagement, stakeholder engagement. And then there were a few different items in regards to relocating infrastructure. And everything else was just a single one. And there were two that was an alternative state routes. But all the other ones were.
Were single bones.
I guess I, I just still am worried about how do we get new voices, but anyhow, let's move on.
What I would say, that's certainly one of our, you know, goals too. I think that one of the conversations we'll have with the board in future ones is how often do we go and do that larger outreach in terms of the strategic plan? Because we're going to do larger outreach in other aspects of what the county does. But in terms of the strategic plan, how often do we go out versus how often do we really rely on?
So if we move the meetings around the county, it would accomplish more goals than that because kind of the old people live says something that's very important. And, and we could have a work session connected with that. It was a civics lesson, but also we're listening, first of listening, and then the civics lesson. So that, so that we've got the sequence and here's our actual work and what it looks like in your community.
And I think as we talk about, or you come to the board, Ted talked about the engagement process. Those are the conversations we will have so that we make sure we can reflect what the board's goals are.
Can I give an example of that?
Sure.
Okay, so just to give an example of why I'm kind of so, my antennas are up so high is Oregon Department of Forestry uses their regular list or in order to harvest surveys. Well, the regular list serve is not balanced in my personal opinion. And so they've, they've crafted all these plans and all these thought processes and everything. It's what we're currently sitting with in response to their list serve and where they harvested information. I don't feel like that that is a healthy way to, to find a stakeholder survey is because those people are already involved. And so you're not getting the, the full photo, the full picture. And so that's why I'm so kind of, is we're on the receiving end of a process developed that way. And so I want to be careful that we don't develop a similar process. Hopefully preventing problems.
And I am so committed to kind of talking about engagement as much as, as much as we're learned months. And people do that, so.
Okay.
And I share your concern.
So I think one clarification that came up there to show you know is that that bottom line of new priorities, those are really unweighted. You know, they're due to some one person's idea. So is there more to stimulate your thinking than you just say, well, I have, you know, I have to take half on my docs and the roller cap or something like that. That's not true. We can put all your docs on carryovers. I'll, I'll explain that part when we get there.
And these are proposals from stakeholders.
Right.
And we are the disposers.
That's right.
Of the priorities.
Um, so there was, there was one county commissioner that provided new, new priorities. But four responded in the survey saying that they thought that carryover priorities were sufficient.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioner Love, hi. How are you? Welcome. You got, just in time to put your dots on the board.
Do you need a minute?
Yeah, I do. Just need it.
Do you need to take a little break?
Sure, absolutely. Good. What, five minutes break? Taking a perfect time and taking a break.
Okay, five minutes break, one, two, three.
We've just been talking about process where we are. Talking about, one thing we have to kind of practice before. Yeah, it's basically we can go along with the development. We're going to go along before we're hearing the kind of that.
So the next adventure is we wanted to say change a title and say childcare, but then isolate a direction. Would that be the time that we're going to be doing that?
Yeah.
I can write next to it. Because I don't want it to fall off the table thinking it's completed. Okay. It's just, it's, it's the time might need to change.
Structure going forward.
To kind of keep it on the table or, thank you.
Okay.
And, and so.
Do I wait, wait to? Yeah. I want to push it through the door. And not count, yeah, I want to.
So this is sort of.
And so the mentions here on sentence that are. I'm.
Want to get a good person in. Uh, to, to that coordinator role. So, yeah, I think it's, I think it's worth keeping it on there at least another year, just to make sure. Get that all set in the right direction and then the county can hopefully can step back and.
Yeah, I don't know if it matters what tier that I was on, I just want it still there.
Yeah, Don.
Yeah, I think that certainly keeping it on is fine. I think. The biggest thing for us is also capturing what we've already done is there's been so much progress with that specific. Yeah, and now we're in the phase of how do we? How do we continue?
Yep.
This after the first year because there's a change in some of the leadership. Um, and so, yeah, I think keeping it on is fine. To me it would be a tier one because it'll be.
Okay.
It'll be something that we're gonna be. Doing, executing over this next year, but. The good news is, is that. Two hundred plus thousand of grants went out. The infrastructure on the training and everything else is in place.
Capacity of.
Huge successes and things to celebrate.
If we could have a list, I know we need more things to do. Have a list of our achievements. I think that might inform this process and it's good for public. Purview as well. Cause we don't want to lose it and if it's not written down, it disappears. So if when we're going forward, we have our successes, because that will ground us. In what we've already achieved.
Yes, and we can do that. We have project lists and we can, we can pull out. For these and get kind of a status.
Or even if we don't talk about it, that it's in the packet so that it can, can, um. For folks that are interested, yeah, make it visible.
So let's just like for timeline, and I know that we've got a couple, you've got. An executive session that we need to do, we also have a budget. Discussion we need to do. I know some of us have to be at things at twelve o'clock.
Well, yeah, twelve fifteen is fine.
Okay. So do we, if we don't have any other questions? Yeah, executive session. So we don't have any other questions, burning questions, maybe we can go ahead and just do the voting.
Do our dots.
Okay, our dots, or sorry.
Also, I just want to just for Commissioner Websege and for, if you're. Uh, Torioka who can't be here right now is that. This is just the first meeting. We're gonna circle back and so whatever conversations that we feel like we haven't had. We will have. The next round and so we will touch base with Commissioner Webb and with Commissioner Torioka, um, as we go through that. Um, just to make sure that everybody feels like they've had the opportunity to. Express their opinions and also get feedback about the process.
Yes.
These are only dots that we're receiving this round. Okay, so if I put them all on tier one somewhere, doesn't matter.
I'm gonna force you to listen.
All right, so the one point made, just to reemphasize. These are preliminary ideas. They are not, there's no requirement, you can do what you want, but. Right now, the decision you have implicitly made is that. Anything you vote for is already up there. If that changes in the next three minutes, write it down and put your dot on it, but, um. You know, it might not get a lot of votes because you haven't had any discussion about it. So you're voting on any one of these things. Now, here's, here's what I want you to do. You have a dozen dots. You have by, I'm not sure, I'm gonna say there are about thirty items up here. We would, we'd like you to get that down to ten to fifteen. And I think that's gonna happen naturally. There's nothing that you have to do to make that happen. You just put your dots where you want. But all your dots are the same color. The color is coded with your initials on it, so in case you want to go back and see who voted on what, you know that. But when you come up here. This column is now your role to you and that's why I have those bars to it. That was not a, you don't have to vote if you, if it was not a priority. Okay, you're just going to go ahead and what you want. So you're going on these. Three columns on each of these sheets. And there's no difference now between carryover and new priorities. You're voting, you got a dozen dots, you've got five sheets to spread them out on. And you can put them all on new priorities and you've got no carryovers. You put them all on carryovers, you've got no new priorities. You can do that however you want. My. My request is that you think about. Uh, and then you're also the vote, you get where you put your dot makes a difference. Tier, tier one, tier two, or tier three.
Yep.
You have, you, we're asking you to use your judgment. Uh, the request is that tier one, that you, you try to, you have at least. Four or five and you probably have no more than eight. Um, and if you hit the ten, well, and if you put all, all of them up at tier one, so be it. But that means that you as a commissioner are saying, all these are tier one and I want to look at all of them this year. Okay, but then you don't have any tier, you got no tier two, tier three. If there's any curve in anything that. This year, we got spread too thin. And there are four things that we're going to focus on. I'm gonna put my dots there. And in fact, I so believe that, I'm not even gonna put my other eight dots on the board. I don't think anyone's gonna do that, but if you want to do that, you can do that. But pretty much what I think most of the people do is. Um, probably have, uh, more than fifty percent of your dots up here on carryovers, but maybe not, I'm just guessing. That, that most, more of them will be in tier one and in tier two and more will be in tier two than in tier three. And so you've got a dozen dots, those dots have. No weight until you put them up here. When you put them up here, then they get by, by putting them in tier one or two, two, three, four. Okay. I don't have any questions about that. We hope that everybody got followed up, correct your commission.
I don't have a question on that, but I have a question on one of the topics. Um, carrying capacity analysis. Um, is that just water or is that land and water?
To the monitons. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty broad category. Again, it's just, we're just. Saying what has come up, but, um, carrying their capacity really is to look at. At those areas that could be developed and what is the infrastructure needs and what are the impacts of development? On water. But it's also transportation. I mean, it's, there's everything.
Okay, perfect. I wanted to point.
What you had outlined in the, uh, for this fiscal year priorities includes infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality.
Okay, I just, I'm curious also, you know, zoning, like. Is there, like the capacity of how your strength is owned, but is the capacity of, of growth that?
Yeah, certainly that's something that plan, planning does look at is where, where is, I mean, in sort of cities, I mean, we're looking at where we've. Where can grow, uh, everywhere, would it occur and where would it make sense? To occur, that they're all separate policy questions.
Yep.
Anybody ready? You have any questions while you're out there? Ask Amanda or me. And if you want to make any notes on that, you can get an answer from me and we'll write it down and we'll put your initials you say.
Sure.
Are you ready? Oh, yeah. I don't know. I'm. I don't think that's.
I think that's. Oh, yeah.
I'm. 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 I'm.
And we can do that. We have project lists and we can, we can pull out. For these and get kind of a status.
Or even if we don't talk about it, that it's in the packet so that it can, can, um. For folks that are interested, yeah, make it visible.
So let's just like for timeline, and I know that we've got a couple, you've got. An executive session that we need to do, we also have a budget. Discussion we need to do. I know some of us have to be at things at twelve o'clock.
Well, yeah, twelve fifteen is fine.
Okay. So do we, if we don't have any other questions? Yeah, executive session. So we don't have any other questions, burning questions, maybe we can go ahead and just do the voting.
Do our dots.
Okay, our dots, or sorry.
Also, I just want to just for Commissioner Websege and for, if you're. Uh, Torioka who can't be here right now is that. This is just the first meeting. We're gonna circle back and so whatever conversations that we feel like we haven't had. We will have. The next round and so we will touch base with Commissioner Webb and with Commissioner Torioka, um, as we go through that. Um, just to make sure that everybody feels like they've had the opportunity to. Express their opinions and also get feedback about the process.
Yes.
These are only dots that we're receiving this round. Okay, so if I put them all on tier one somewhere, doesn't matter.
I'm gonna force you to listen.
Oh, man, okay.
All right, so the one point made, just to reemphasize. These are preliminary ideas. They are not, there's no requirement, you can do what you want, but. Right now, the decision you have implicitly made is that. Anything you vote for is already up there. If that changes in the next three minutes, write it down and put your dot on it, but, um. You know, it, it might not get a lot of votes because you haven't had any discussion about it. So you're voting on any one of these things. Now, here's, here's what I want you to do. You have a dozen dots. You have by, I'm not sure, I'm gonna say there are about thirty items up here. We would, we'd like you to get that down to ten to fifteen. And I think that's gonna happen naturally. There's nothing that you have to do to make that happen. You just put your dots where you want. But all your dots are the same color. The color is coded with your initials on it, so in case you want to go back and see who voted on what, you know that. But when you come up here. This column is now your role to you and that's why I have those bars to it. That was not a, you don't have to vote if you, if it was not a priority. Okay, you're just going to go ahead and what you want. So you're going on these. Three columns on each of these sheets. And there's no difference now between carryover and new priorities. You're voting, you got a dozen dots, you've got five sheets to spread them out on. And you can put them all on new priorities and you've got no carryovers. You put them all on carryovers, you've got no new priorities. You can do that however you want. My. My request is that you think about. Uh, and then you're also the vote, you get where you put your dot makes a difference. Tier, tier one, tier two, or tier three.
Yep.
You have, you, we're asking you to use your judgment. Uh, the request is that tier one, that you, you try to, you have at least. Four or five and you probably have no more than eight. Um, and if you hit the ten, well, and if you put all, all of them up at tier one, so be it. But that means that you as a commissioner are saying, all these are tier one and I want to look at all of them this year. Okay, but then you don't have any tier, you got no tier two, tier three. If there's any curve in anything that. This year, we got spread too thin. And there are four things that we're going to focus on. I'm gonna put my dots there. And in fact, I so believe that, I'm not even gonna put my other eight dots on the board. I don't think anybody's gonna do that, but if you want to do that, you can do that. But pretty much what I think most of the people do is. Um, probably have, uh, more than fifty percent of your dots up here on carryovers, but maybe not, I'm just guessing. That, that most, more of them will be in tier one and in tier two and more will be in tier two than in tier three. And so you've got a dozen dots, those dots have. No weight until you put them up here. When you put them up here, then they get by, by putting them in tier one or two, two, three, four. Okay. I don't have any questions about that. We hope that everybody got followed up, correct your commission.
I don't have a question on that, but I have a question on one of the topics. Um, carrying capacity analysis. Um, is that just water or is that land and water?
To the monitons.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty broad category. Again, it's just, we're just. Saying what has come up, but, um, carrying their capacity really is to look at. At those areas that could be developed and what is the infrastructure needs and what are the impacts of development? On water. But it's also transportation. I mean, it's, there's everything.
So I just want, okay, perfect. I wanted to point.
What you had outlined in the, uh, for this fiscal year priorities includes infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality.
Okay, I just, I'm curious also, you know, zoning, like. Is there, like the capacity of how your strength is owned, but is the capacity of, of growth that?
Yeah, certainly that's something that plan, planning does look at is where, where is, I mean, in sort of cities, I mean, we're looking at where we've. Where can grow, uh, everywhere, would it occur and where would it make sense? To occur, that they're all separate policy questions.
Yep.
Anybody ready? You have any questions while you're out there? Ask Amanda or me. And if you want to make any notes on that, you can get an answer from me and we'll write it down and we'll put your initials you say.
Sure. Pointing. I think I wasn't representing. You know, are they really able to hear your name for our equal knowledge?
I have something I need to support. The environment that I'm living in.
I don't have any, you want any thoughts?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no worries.
Stop here.
I know.
I didn't think. Hope that I think that's.
So, um. God, I was ready.
I want to show this to you. Of course, I can get a question.
It means one only one, there you are, and then you're on. I mean, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
We can do that, we can.
I'm scared.
I've been here almost.
Even last, in one way. Hopefully to give people, to take this back. Nothing to be, right, that we're mainly feel like something. I feel like there's some other, to make them know, I feel like it's sort of like.
You know.
All things that.
I know. Or, you know, we're. Yeah. I feel that next to, my dot next to her, not, the feeling. We didn't say like.
So, so.
Probably before, but. Oh, really? Yeah.
I, sorry, I. Turned it out. That, she said that, and it's amazing, but don't cheat the life of it, no. I. My question. It's. I'm. Like.
I'm. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, I don't think. Followed very well. But I'm not. Hey. Um, I will do that after. Before it's supposed to. Well, now the, the first.
Relax.
Um, look great. Okay. Well, I'm. When I go.
Yep.
So.
The best of the day. Yeah. Exactly.
I'm just. Enamish. You're certainly. The. So. You're in the session. On. So. Yeah. This. I'm. You can. Check. I'm. I'm. No. You want. I mean, maybe you guys, you guys. You could, I think I didn't do the first one. More of his watch. Yeah. So.
Well, we're. So. Sure. They're. They're. Probably.
But, yeah. Maybe not.
That's how we get. They're, they're. They're certainly. Yeah, they're, they're. Long.
So, Don. Um, I didn't, since we clarified it all. I was like, what do I actually write? Say the words.
Yeah, so. Don't explore.
Yes. Yeah.
Miami.
I feel like I need to brag my chair over there next to you guys. Hi, guys. How you doing? But then, but then this. Yeah, you know, he and I.
Is John just gonna provide this?
He is right now.
We'll. Five phones.
Yeah. I think it's gonna be in like.
Nice.
Yeah. It might be a little active, but she's gonna add this.
We've got a little break.
Is there a new county council going to hear? So how is your something going?
Oh. Yeah. Yeah. It's in, uh, Terry County.
Yeah, very nice.
Yeah. We don't.
Thanks. Where, I'm sorry. Guys, I forgot.
But you know what? Dance is sweet.
I'm like, it's about ten minutes, thirteen years, but it's very good.
Yeah. Yeah. Play it.
Yeah, it's fine.
Nice.
Yeah.
And now you can.
We're getting there. There's one, we had to. And then.
I was about ready to, so my friend Katie has a vacant home that was her mom, needs a lot of work. I was like, Katie, we might need to like brush the dust off and, you know, turn the water on.
You still have to recharge your electric.
Katie does have a house, it's just a work in progress and so somebody needs that space. For short term. I mean, it's not a long term, like years living there. Years, months, but during that time, you might be missing a wall or five. Or the plumbing might not work for a couple days.
Well.
So, well.
Yeah.
But at least there's a.
And a room. As the.
Yeah, I thought I'm gonna do this more often. Yeah.
Yeah, just sent her on. But that's eighteen on.
Yeah, well, that's awesome. I do appreciate it.
This is.
Hard time.
I, this is how I learned. I don't know.
There's lots of meetings.
Right. Well, and I'm, I'm just. Carryover. I'm just also. About my brain.
You're, no. All right, he just, John just. Just voted. Via phone.
The, the voting is completed. Let me do, uh. Quick summary for you that you need to see. And that I, we got the numbers exactly right, but let me say that, uh, prediction's more or less proved through. There are no tier three items. And, uh, of, of the items out there. There are, I, 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 by my account, there are fourteen, whether it's twelve or fifteen items down. There are fourteen tier one items that had two of your votes. So, you know, it's, it's all kind of, this is all the staff need to be able to. Kind of process through this and get it back to you. Now, when we come back to you next time. Even though there are no tier three items now. Let's say, let's say that you picked fourteen items that we think should be tier one, two, or three, and you have them all as tier one. But Don may say, we can't do all this as tier one, so we're gonna move some of the tier two and some of the tier three. But I, I think, thank you very much. I think you have, uh. Done the exercise and it gives us a good place to start. And just to remind you, last time we did this. And you did an exercise like this, and then we said, we'll come back to you with something. It was pretty close bait by the time it got to you and you were able to accept, uh, pretty quickly. So I think we're in good shape. The stuff process was supposed to go. Thank you for your help. And, uh, and we will see you in January.
Yeah, thank you, Terry.
Yeah, so what I will say, thank you, Terry, for all your work, uh, is the end.
Yeah, thank you, Amanda.
Is like, you know. This is, it just gets us further down. The board still has opportunities to reach out, Paul, as we go through this, add, as we go through this. And then I will also. If you don't mind, weigh in a little bit just based on my perspective and my knowledge, uh, as we go through, so. Um. But yeah, so this will, this will help us to get to that next conversation. So thank you for taking the time.
I wish I could have more than twelve thoughts.
I know. Next time we'll give you thirteen.
I have just one quick comment before, because I, I'm gonna leave and I'm, I'm not gonna stay around, uh, because I don't think that you can for your executive section. So I won't be able to follow up with you later, but I want to tell you, uh, number one. You're, as you know, you're, uh, really very lucky to have. You're, as you know, you're really very lucky to have Don here leading this thing. And I think you probably also know, we'd be really lucky to have Amanda, or at least I know that I'm really lucky to have. What what I could do here, what I have to do is still a little comparative would have to be done in other places. So that's point number one. Point number two. I just wanna let you know. How amazing the progress is. Because it's hard for you to see them sometime. But for me, I can look back on three years ago. And what it was like kind of looking through the longer process and getting that done. And what I can also look back on is the history of doing this and watching how cities, counties have said, well, that was just too much work. We're not gonna continue on that. And I've always said in theory, if you continue on it, you're gonna find that it gets easier and easier. But I've never been able to prove it through because nobody could continue on. But you guys did, and I think it's amazing what you're getting done. And the final point then is that this strategic plan is no different than just developing as a person. What you decide you're gonna focus on is what you're gonna make progress on. And by focusing on these things, you make progress. And you I mean, the fact you can say, well, that way, you know, social services, childcare. That wasn't, that wasn't, I was just starting to be on a list three years ago. And now you can look at it and say, wow, we've done that. And so the last point then is your idea of getting it down. When when I'm working with another jurisdiction, one thing that they did was they went through, they done on not a real real strategic plan like you do, but they went on five year. Of council work plans. What are we gonna work on about that? All the backup stuff that you guys have done. And so we went through and just said, what did we accomplish? And there was a list that then showed what year was the what year was this item adopted? And what happened with it? And they're completed, could completed and started and dropped, never started again. And that turned out to be not only a useful list for the decision makers, but a very useful list for I think what you guys were talking about. I think people go out when you're having these meetings with the public and saying. Stuff is getting done. And I think you've got the record now and I I encourage you to blow and show it. So thank you for all your efforts.
I just wanted to to say something in regards to social services and equity plan for access access. I feel like all of those are a plan for equity act like for equity and access to service. I I don't know if I'm misreading or or. Because when when you look at equity plan for access to services, I feel like all three of those address equity issues in our community. And so I I don't know, I guess moving forward kind of maybe pulling equity over here to social service. Versus having equity over there in governance, but maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
No, I think, I mean, you can look at it. That way, and that's great. Part of the equity and access to services for all part of that, and you you're seeing that. You know, that's also part of the result is that, you know, as I talk about, you know, civic responsibility, civic engagement with the county staff. Is there, you know, one thing that I always agree here is that we serve everybody. But in serving everybody, we have to identify where the barriers are to that and be honest about them. And then figure out what our response to the benefit is. And so. So the access. You know, the equity plan for access to services is really kind of a corporate strategy that also has policy issues that are reinforcing it. But as an organization, we have to say one of our values is we're serving everybody. We're gonna identify barriers and we're gonna do what they need to address.
I guess I would then probably have moved a dot over to the equity plan for just now understanding it more. So I got.
Might be one that I.
Yeah. Yeah. But mainly just maybe in the future, the next time we do this, because I feel like we're gonna do it again, to give a little bit more of a description to each of the titles. So that I know the direction that the title is going when obviously we all think of things differently. And so, because I saw equity as. Social versus governance. And so anyhow, thank you.
We will, we can provide that and get into those conversations.
Yeah, thanks again, Terry. Thank you, Amanda. I agree with you. We become much more efficient about places. Thanks again. Next item is the proposed budget policy for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Our assistant county manager. And county manager.
There's the board. This is up at fifty six. It's the end of summary and then the policies. So every year, the board adopts the budget policies for the organization. It's gonna help provide input and guidance to the budget process. We've made some adjustments to the budget policies. They're they're shorter than they have been in the past. Um, but we're trying to to provide better information for the departments. And this is based upon the projection model that the county is now using. Is that under C, under two C, which is on page fifty nine. It says general guidance for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. And so part of my goal is to give some general guidance to the organization, to the board, to the public. About what our expenditure growth rate might be based upon the projection models that we're seeing. So this is kind of a canary in the thorn line kind of a effect where we're trying to give you a preview of what might happen in the budget. So so what we're saying right now, again, we have a new consultant that's helping us with the budget process because of the vacancy with the finance director. It's yeah, Jennifer Carlson resigned, and so we don't have. Yeah, so. It is Marino and Company. It's a CPA firm that does consulting too, but Rob Moody, who is somebody that a lot of us have worked with for many years. And he was a former finance director. He's gonna help us just get through the budget process because honestly, Monica and I don't have the bandwidth to do all of it. But so what what we're saying is that the the targeted expenditure rate growth for 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 next fiscal year will fall in six to seven percent range. And that would still maintain all of our fund balance goals and and our financial position. So.
Does that also?
And and that's for the general fund.
That's okay.
Yeah. And so, so then there's just, you know, some of the base budget assumptions, how we, you know, estimate revenues. The other one that I'm just gonna touch base on is a lot of it that we've seen in previous years is on page sixty one. Number four. General fund reserve goals. So I've rewritten this section. And I tried to make it a little bit. Um, there about how the fund that these are both were. And so there's I, you know, we talked about some of the issues about why we have reserve funds and I won't go into all of those. We threw under A. Uh, but then under B, on page sixty two, I talked a little bit about the general fund reserve goal. And so the county will manage the general fund with the goal of maintaining the reserve within the range of twenty to thirty percent of budgeted expenditures. I think it's important to have a larger range and not just the one number. Because right now we have a lot of uncertainty with our general fund revenues. And so we need to try to be at the upper part of the range right now. But I also say that equates to two and a half, three and a half months of expenses and at the minimum level is is twenty percent. We really don't want to get below twenty percent for all those reasons that I talk about in under number A, subsection A. So. The general fund, and this goes to some of the confusion, I think, that's been talked about. The general fund reserve sits in three places. And so as part of B, I tried to identify that it's in the contingency, which is a budgeted contingency. It's in the general fund stabilization, which is a budgeted. Fund, and then it's in the ending fund balance. And the ending fund balance is simply. The expenditures, the revenues minus expenditures at the end of the year. Whatever that number is, that minus those other two things is what carries forward as the beginning fund. How so? So we're just trying to clarify that those are the only places that the general fund desires.
So I have a question. Cause on page eight of this document. It says, under item fifteen, unappropriated ending fund balances. And the last phrase is operating contingencies. Is that the same thing as you just referenced? Be a one contingency or are those distinct? Cause cause in my, that's where I've been confused for eight years at least.
So unappropriated any fund balance is is just that we received more revenues than we had anticipated or budgeted. So we didn't appropriate those revenues. And so. So they aren't, we we can't expend them unless we appropriated them and identified them. And so. So they're they're unidentified. They're they're still part of our balance sheet.
But then does that become item four here? Cause I'm looking to have an absolutely complete list. And in my mind, item fifteen adds an item to that list, listening to what you said.
Doesn't go into.
It's in, this is. That the ending fund balance includes the unappropriated ending fund balance. So if you go to that, to that page sixty two, under those three elements under B.
Yeah.
Ending fund balance includes the unappropriate ending fund. Yeah, because ending fund balance is the unappropriate ending fund.
Okay. Specify then.
Yes, so. So so those are, anytime you look at the county budget, the contingency is appropriated, it's budgeted. The general fund stabilization is a special fund that has general fund reserves and that's appropriated. The only unknown is the end of fund balance. So if you look at those two, and then you know that there's there's this end of balance, that's where the reserves are.
And so we're taking all three of those things and adding them all up to be between twenty and thirty percent. Hopefully on the high side considering our fiscal.
Yeah, because we have so much uncertainty right now. We want to be.
This meeting two years ago. This, I like the map, thank you.
So so I just wanted, we just wanted to like try to clarify some of of these pieces. And again, this is used by the departments and we're gonna talk to the budget committee. We're gonna share this with the budget committee now. And then we'll have a meeting in January, which we're gonna have in December, but because we're short of staff for some. And so we're gonna come back and talk about this, but this is the guidance that we're giving the organization.
Could you add what she was sharing or or question asking to the ending fund balance, like just as a subheading underneath?
Yeah, we will clarify under.
And one more on page seven, page sixty four. Fourteen A. Thirty percent goes to. Fund stormwater drainage and improvements to public roads primarily in arch cave or any legal costs associated with legal action taken by citizens of unincorporated parts of county. Against the county on land use issues. So who's tracking those? And and does this referendum on church and rentals that we're seeking, does that fall under this category?
Yeah, so 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 this is a current board policy. And so and so, yes, land use, we we will look at those costs and and we will. That that's a policy decision for the board. So as we go through this, we will identify those and then and then the board could choose to then, if there's a defense, use some of those.
I I wanna see those. I wanna call those out because my concern is that until people see the real cost of this, it's simply theoretical or it's personal. Now, there's a public cost and I want, I want that.
So we will go through that, Commissioner, and we can identify with those costs.
Thank you. So it's a current board policy to have. Improvements to public roads primarily in arch cave.
So yes, that there was a current board policy that says part of the transient lodging tax will be set aside for some road improvements. Primarily the arch kicker because that's where a lot of the STRs.
That's where the revenue comes from. And so it should, but the problem, man, the problem is, I see Shingle Mill Road is paved a lot. And the rest of the roads are not part of the county system and they're terrible. I mean, Ted, God love him and Terry go around and they raid when they can, but there are pitfalls that define description.
And and that's why we have spent them outside of Arch Cave for those for those reasons.
You can only pay something so many times.
Well, and because we do have other other unincorporated.
Wow.
And so. And and so, but that was, you know, that's kind of a relic of of a past board policy. It's still the board policy. The board can always change that. The budget policies are just reflecting another policy. So it wasn't a budget policy, it was another policy that's toward this.
I I guess I just, I my, I I get, I get why it's listed. But I always hesitate to call out one tiny portion of our community as especially deserving.
Yeah.
And I will. You know what I mean?
We'll just add that the Public Works Group, they do look at these funds and, you know, they look at the percentage approximately that comes from the arch cave area.
I was like.
And then, and so they do because there are other areas such as in the. Certain time area that has that have public roads as well, as well as the that you started the county. So they do, they do break that out.
Could we seek a more equitable phrasing for what you just described? That is not calling out an individual community as. That's down the road. I'm just saying that.
Yeah, we're just reflecting what the current policy is. So so we can certainly have that conversation.
Yeah.
With the board. All that we're trying to do is just capture where the TLT.
And yeah, and maybe we have a meeting at the Arch Cave Fire Hall and most of the community members can have this discussion because to involve the ethical people with the logic and the language and the money is helpful. I just, wherever the money is coming from, I feel like it should be equally and appropriately expended. And and arch cake may have a a larger tie and fine. It's just, I I'm calling it out in a visionary document, so. It doesn't translate well, I guess.
Yeah, again. It's just saying what the policy.
Yeah. I appreciate it, sorry.
So, so, yeah, I I think that there's some work we can do just about how we communicate that and the conversations that we might want to have at the community level. And I think, you know, depending on what happens in legislative session, we might be having broader conversations about. So. Yeah, so I think that must be the opportunity to then talk broader about this this other calls. So that's all that I have, Commissioner. We will send it to the budget committee, letting them know that we shared it with you. We'll make the clarification of these ending fund balance.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
My question, we, I noticed that there we're advertising for a new budget committee member. What's?
Well, that's, yes, so. So right now, one of the other things that that we wanted to mention to your board is that we would like to make all the budget committee appointments end in June thirtieth. Of the year that they expire, because right now.
Now it's.
Yeah. It's February. And so, and what I'm used to is that it ends at the end of the fiscal year. And so we would like to do that is to change that, but there are current differences.
There's one vacant or it it one term expired and it comes with her Pita Montero. And I have spoken with her and she is fine with continuing her term to June thirtieth and so she would be happy to.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's off the.
Yeah, it just would make much more sense. Cause you never know, something could happen at the end of the fiscal year where you have to convene the budget. And I mean, in fact, the budget process goes beyond. So anyhow, so that's that's it for that. So the only other, I have one other thing before we go into executive session real quick is that. We have a work session potentially planned for December twenty. We have a work session potentially planned for December twenty first, I think. And at the time, we had a number of items that we were potentially looking at, but some of those items are no longer pressing. And so one option for us is to not have the December twenty first work session. And given its timing and it's, you know, it's adjacent to the holidays, that might be a good thing. I don't wanna meet just to meet, I mean, we value the board's time. And so right now, we don't have anything that would have to go on the twenty first, and so I'm just mentioning that. And then if it's the board's druthers, we can just cancel the twenty first and, because that was an extra work session.
So, thank you.
It sounds like everybody's pretty much made us their pride on that one.
Make my brothers clear.
I, I think everybody's brothers are clear, so. Yeah, probably didn't even need to ask that. So then.
So then we're just going to executive session, how important, but not limited to ORS one nine two point six six zero subset two subset E, property transactions. Yep.
Good seeing you guys.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Just want to snow Teresa when we're okay on that end.